Goes in waves of loudness and people think it's almost six thirty. We got the count down over there.
It takes it out. I think so. It's got like a chime to it. Well, my clock has six. We'll wait until the official time clock starts.
I have six thirty fifty.
You have six thirty?
Hey, that's slow.
Okay. If everybody would stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Dryer, do you recall the roll?
Mayor Carney.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Derry.
Here.
Ms. G. Daly.
Here.
Ms. Ferguson.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Rocker.
And if there are no additions or amendments to tonight's council meeting agenda, the agenda will stand as provided. Is there a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from the June twelfth meeting?
A motion to approve the June twelfth council meeting.
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Derry.
I'm staying.
Ms. G. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
I'm staying.
We have a quite a few visitors for this evening's meeting. With the clock, as you can see over here on the wall, we are going to be putting a two-minute time limit on, so that way it gives each person the ability to get up and speak, but then also kind of takes the control out of my cellphone being the timer and subjective. So, everybody can see kind of how much time is on the clock and go from there. So, our first visitor is Ms. Holly Rast with the Union County Health Department. If you'd like to come up to the podium. And bear with us, this is our first time using it this evening.
He's trying to get it to work.
And so, there's always room for error with technology.
So, I don't have two minutes too, huh?
Yes, yes, to make it fair.
My name is Holly, I'm from the Union County Health Department, and I was just checking in with council to find out if there are any issues that you all would like to bring directly to me, to our office, relative to health department-related issues, vacuuming, food-related, nuisance-related, child registration-related. I don't have anything currently pending. I did get a nuisance complaint along the apartments on North Street, which were incredibly valid. The concern was cockroaches coming over from a neighboring apartment, and they had a problem. So, I'll be asking the owner to spray the entire building and hopefully resolve that issue. We also got a complaint that someone had eaten at Old's New, and I'm gonna forget the name, the New Dairy, whatever the New Dairy Queen does in town. Somebody had eaten there, and about four hours later was wildly ill. So, they went to the emergency room. However, the complaint came in to me was that they had eaten a twist cone there, which they do not serve twist cones. So, my suspicion on the complaint was that perhaps wasn't quite so valid. But I didn't find any issues at all there. They're actually really clean, doing their job. And I also did bed-in today, air inspection, and I was thrilled. They are, I will tell you all, they are incredibly clean, they're incredibly conscious, and they get free notes up from me as far as health department score. The, uh, that, I did also did the pool. The pool is great, everything's looking good at the pool. So, do any of you all have any questions for me as far as Union Council side?
I just appreciate you coming and doing your due diligence here and the community, making sure that health is at the number-one position for our residents and in communicating, coming to council. I know this is an evening for you, so appreciate that. And just every, Union County's willingness, the health department's willingness to really help us out.
Good, good. I know that we will be doing some mosquito trapping, and I think in the past we've done mosquito trapping in Past Time Park. I don't know that we're doing it there this year, but since I'm not involved in that.
There are some.
So, okay. So, I guess we are. So, and we'll let you know when you come out of that.
Thank you. Do you need other locations around?
I'm not aware of any, but that doesn't mean, I just don't know where it is, that's all. It's not part of what I do.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Very much. I appreciate your time.
So, Mr. Dryer, so it's just gonna count up then and we have to?
Please.
Okay, I will let you be the one to look, make sure at the two o'clock mark. Maybe we can get a bell or something.
Can we get one of those air horns?
Okay, for our next visitor, we have Mr. Darren Lane.
Good evening. So, I'm here on behalf of the T and L Land and Camp Company over tonight's resolution, twenty twenty three.
Can you keep going?
So, I just have a few questions for council on their behalf. Is, you know, is the CRA, the tax payment, in the economic development toolbox for the village, still in downtown?
Yes.
It's still part of your toolbox?
Yeah.
So, I mean, we use that to bring economic development to the village. I've heard people say in past meetings, the council members said, well, the downtown's already done, looks great. Well, there's twenty buildings in downtown that still don't look great. So, just moving forward, I just also would like to know, you know, has the school board reached out to council to influence this in any way? I know I've had issues with the school board. I know when I was a part of the community, we would never reach out to the school board and try to influence them in any way. So, that's my other question to council. Has the school board reached out to the council members? What is that? I guess it'd be Paul Craig or somebody.
Yeah.
Go that round.
Yeah, through, through an email, we have received from a school board member.
That's all I ask, you know?
Yep.
It's just a, I have a building sitting in downtown, and we're trying to do great things with it, things that the village needs. You know, we're already getting calls, maybe for wedding events, for parties, for a lot of good stuff. So, it can either go one or two ways. It can either be a great place to go, or it can just be a building painted black, sitting there ready for the next twenty years. Thank you.
Mayor, former mayor, Lane, thank you for coming.
You're mayor, oh, it's a mayor, just like a president.
But, um, my question is, and it's a key question for this proposal, is do you feel like development in the uptown area is discouraged?
Do I feel, I feel like it is like pulling teeth to develop in the uptown area? When you watch council meetings and people fighting over pain, when you get newsletters that are being politicized, and you know, there is not one single person on this board that has had any contact with Darren Lane since he left as far as, hey, will you guys do this, or you should do this? I've always been more than kind, I stepped aside to let Mayor Carney take that role, and I never wanted her to feel obligated even having me around. So, I think that this, with my wife and Tim buying this project, had nothing to do with Darren Lane being on title, because it's his wife. It just has to do with Darren Lane and Tim Dawson. Tim Dawson's a great friend of mine, has been for thirty years and will be for thirty more, hopefully. And my wife, both are business people. They bought this project, just like everyone else in Plain City, that's bought a building and expects the advantage because it's part of the economic development toolbox. That's why it was great. If you don't want to use it, take it out, then it's all fair.
Mr. Reed, we have to try, I buy the, I know you asked a question, so it's kind of money this section.
I'd like to talk to you in a different capacity.
Thank you. Mr. Ron Winn.
Hello there. I'm Ron Winn, I'm Ron Winn, and I would like to talk about the noise ordinance. Probably the last thirty years or so, this has come up about three different times. I've worked with this gentleman, you know, these three different times, on the noise ordinance product. And every time it seems like it gets a little wackier. Now, what I mean by that is that looking at the information we have here, there's several different things they're talking about, a fifty-foot limit, noise level readings, sound level readings, and various different things. I don't know, but some of the things I'd like to explain to you is about noise levels. Do I, am I neck-erbed? I consider myself a V-necker. I have forty-five, fifty years in electronics. Iowa Fortune Online Tech, Pittsburgh, Virginia, from the Vietnam era, calibration lab, electronics, that's what I did. I work with electronic equipment, I calibrated all different types. Everything has to go back to the national gear standards. It has to be tested, it has to be stamped, it has to be checked. Some of it monthly, some of it semiannually, some of it quarterly. Everything that you're talking about doing will have to be checked and stamped. Equipment will have to purchase through a company that keeps records. So, it's not like going out and taking your cellphone and taking reads. And said, this is today, it's windy out there. The readings should get today, and the readings should get tomorrow. I know there's a problem, but you're not going to solve the problem by taking sound level readings, just without work. Not like a radar gun, where you can point it at something and get a reading. The readings you take today, at the same time tomorrow, will be done due to the ambient surroundings. The weather, ambient weather affects it, sound affects it. Too many different variables. So, I know you have a problem, I'm not gonna go into detail, but council created some of that problem in the last four or five years. And you should have been able to see it coming. But with the businesses there in Plain City and saying that any noise level above fifty feet would be violation, that's not enforceable. And of course, they will take that, or anyone else will also.
Thank you, Mr. Winn, I know, I'm trying to stick to our two-minute time, but appreciate your coming to talk about me.
If you want to contact me, anyone, and go through this, I'm more than willing to do it. But I will say this, if the notice comes out where I'm gonna be constrained from running my business, as I said, I consider myself, and I have the documentation on my background, I put my stuff in the paper, all the systems, and I will get it forward.
Thank you. Mr. Eric Medsie.
Last time you guys had a time limit, it was two minutes per subject. Is that the case tonight?
I think it's two minutes to address council.
That's unfortunate. Yes, Mr. Winn, as an expert, I read about it in the newspaper for years, all the complaints involving residential neighbors close to his facility. That's the reason I'm here tonight. Tomorrow, or Wednesday, comes up in front of the design view board, adding more roll-up garage-style windows to Tim Dawson's facility there on Main Street. I don't know for sure what the plan is, but the scuttlebutt is that he's gonna put an indoor stage in that, what is now Main Street treasures. And he's gonna roll up that door, and I'm gonna be unable to conduct business in my own office. So, you guys are just gonna go down a rabbit hole here. We're gonna have a major problem. I mean, am I gonna have to set up a pigeon cannon on my building? Because I really do have a pigeon problem. There's crap there to prove it. Am I gonna set up a pigeon cannon to, you know, you're gonna have people setting speakers up on each side of the street, just blasting each other? Because I'm just stuck in the crosshairs, I'm not being between his building and the brewery, and Mr. Winn is right behind me, and it just echoes through there, it's so loud, it can't hear. And you guys are gonna have major problems coming up Wednesday night, so I'm here just to give you a heads up. Second thing, zoning. I was driving to work today and saw a fifteen or twenty-foot whiskey sign painted on the side of what I think is One Sixty West Main. I would never, ever go into Mr. Dawson's property for any reason. So, I could clearly see it from the street, didn't come up in front of the design view board, I never got a notice. So, you have an illegal painting of a brick building again, but you have a giant whiskey sign. Now, I know your zoning code does not even allow a ghost sign, let alone a whiskey sign, present day, on the side of the building. So, that is my formal complaint. And according to your zoning code, defines per, per day, or per week. So, please look into that. But be aware, this noise ordinance thing is gonna get much, much worse before it gets better, unless someone does something. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it a stop in your? Yeah, I'm getting a little stop. Okay. All right, Mr. Ron Ger.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak a few minutes, this is a retarded campground. Nothing specific as far as recommendations so much, but I just wanted to address a few things. I've got about thirty minutes here, you can keep me just a minute. My wife and I are full-time RVers, and we spend half the year here in this area and half in Arizona. And our families from here, we're from Columbus, and we consider our home, we keep Ohio at our Columbus address. But trust me, we consider Plain City our home in the past four years through this season. And we love it here. So, there's been questions raised about whether it's unique for municipality to have a campground. It is not, we've traveled across this country several times. And we have stayed in a number of municipal campgrounds, counties, of course, state parks, that's a different deal, but towns all over the country have their own campground. Some are free, they love to have the business, that's what they have them for. To bring people in, and that's a benefit, of course, to Plain City, is that we have people live in campground, they spend money in town. And there's, that's undeniable. People come into town for work, working at Amazon for instance, up the road, and they stay for a good while, people are visiting families, sometimes taking care of family for the long term. They're in for sports events, both for tournaments that they might be involved in, or coming to see Burfield, or they come for the Irish Fest, or Buckeye Games, and all kinds of reasons people come to town to camp. Travelers passing through, of course, so bicycle campers, and that's going to be a much more prevalent as we take the trail for a billiard up to here. So, there's lots of reasons people come, and it's important for them to have a place that's safe, quiet, beautiful, and these comments I've had from folks, that they just love it here. And it is one of only eight campgrounds in this radius from Columbus. So, it's very important, of course, to have, I think, that it shows a welcoming community. And problems have been very few, as camp host there, and sadly, my wife works at the office, and we just haven't seen issues. They've been out a great while, certainly. So, I know you're considering the length of stays and things like that, and certainly, that's valuable to do. I've got some suggestions for that, if anyone wants to discuss it. I'll discuss these things when I'm through, of course. And lots of issues become a problem.
Yes, thank you.
But I just wanted to make a few comments, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tyler Jackson? Oh, you're with, okay, and same with Mr. Jonathan Wilcox, and, okay. And Mr. Gary Smith, okay. You're on hand for comments and everything, okay. Great. That concludes our visitors portion of the meeting, moving into reports. If you've been following the news and everything this past week, we have, our town has been dealing with the tragedy that happened last Thursday. I attended the viewing hour for baby Madison, Madison baby Doe on Saturday morning, and just want to say thank you to our police department, thank you to Pleasant Valley Fire District for being the ones that are first on scene for that incident. Thank you to our local waste drivers for alerting the police as quickly as they did. And especially, I want to thank Mr., thank Chief Dale McKee. Because I don't think with, without his tenacity, he would, we would not have had this funeral service. I just want to give Chief McKee a major round of applause for putting together the entire ceremony, and so I know I'm gonna have a lot of time. I think that when one of the first calls on Friday, that I had a chance to talk to him, and he just said, we have to do, give this little baby a proper burial. And I said, anything, like, I'm all for that, I think it's a great idea. And I talked to Haley and Ms. Lepton about, like, you know, is that okay? Like, what do we, what do we need to do? And she was on board, but, I mean, we just agreed, we just said yes. But you planned the entire thing and did all the behind, you spent many hours doing that, that you didn't not have to do, but it just helped to bring our town together when the news media just wanted to get the shock factor. And I, I mean, I got to the point too, I was like, why are they reaching out again? Everything's been said. But you, it was a very nice funeral and viewing, and it was a packed room. I hated I had to step out, my son was playing a tournament game, so we attended the viewing hour, and it was a full house. And the cemetery ceremony was perfect. So, this little baby did not have a good time on earth, but she's up in heaven. So, thank you. And then, the other thing that I've been working on is kicking off, and I want to say thanks to Pleasant Valley Fire District today. They helped us educate over sixty incoming kindergarteners for our safety town that's happening this week. It's solely ran by volunteers and our first responders in the Union County Health Department. Holly's not here, but they have really supplied a great event. And Sergeant Prather and Officer Lake was helping to teach the kids hand signals, and they got free bicycle helmets from Union County Health Department, so it's been a great, great week. State Highway Patrol helicopter is gonna be here on Wednesday, so if you see a helicopter landing at the elementary school, it's okay. It's just for safety town, nothing is happening.
And we'll post that on Moms in the Know at a time frame.
Yes, you know what, that is a good, I will do that, I will do that, because it's exciting. Nine-thirty in the morning, so, I mean, if you want to watch it land, you can come and do that. But, so just want to thank our first responders for helping out, and there, a lot of them are doing it on their extra time and in-between runs and shifts, so just appreciate that for our youth of the community. And I know, yes, with that, I will move on to our finance director, Ms. Sonnet.
Thank you, I have not been to this evening.
And then Chief McKee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm taking for the time course also. I just have a couple things. Sergeant Howard was selected to attend the Police Executive Leadership College beginning in the spring of twenty twenty-four. This is a mandatory training that requires all new sergeants to attend. Even though he's been a sergeant for two years now, it took this long just to get him into this course. We received this scholarship that will pay for half of it. And what I plan to introduce you to is that since nineteen eighty-six, two thousand four hundred eighty-nine, I'm all for the executives, I graduated from PEL, or Police Executive Leadership College. And I'm proud to say that five of those are complaints to the police department, so. And then lastly, I know you just talked about the babies, that was a tragedy that we had. Also, our canine andor passed away three days later. So, it's been a while time at the police department, so the funeral will be the Saturday at the Placeta Elementary School. And I'd like for all council to attend if they can, it starts at ten o'clock. He's gonna have full honors, the honor guard will be there, the back pipes, all that, the truffle flares, which weren't much to split. And then a funeral reception to town, of all law enforcement agencies. So, that's all I have this time, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Chief McKee, thank you. I did not mean to overlook andor, he was a vital part to our community, so I apologize. And that's, Ms. Lepton?
Thank you. The tree parade is wrapping up this week, tree parades should be going in, trees should be planted. There will be a couple of closeout items, but for the most part, it should be done for Fourth of July parade next week. Fourth of July parade begins at ten AM next Tuesday. Lots of activities going on through the day, farmer's market, music, fun in the park, and then fireworks at nine forty-five. And then lastly, to echo Mayor Carney's comments, I just thank Chief McKee for his leadership the past week. It's never easy being in the news that much for two different situations, and it was handled really professionally and very clearly represented our community really well. So, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lepton. Council President, Mr. Sins.
Thank you, Mayor. Finishing up the Administrator's Annual Evaluation this week, and then we'll have an officially part of the work session. And that is pretty much it for now.
Thank you, Mr. Sins. And then, hall director, Mr. Lafayette.
I have no report.
Communications and marketing?
No update.
Board of zoning appeals?
Nothing new.
Planning and zoning, our next meeting is July nineteenth at six thirty. Parks and Recreation, and we have items on tonight's agenda that has passed through planning and zoning. Parks and Rec?
And is the July work session with joint P and Z and council on July? So, you, next P and Z meeting is July nineteenth, but are we having P and Z at July fifth?
Yeah, at the council session.
At work session on July fifth? Okay, thank you. Yes, I apologize for that, I've been focused just on the nineteenth meeting. Parks and Rec, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. On the recent funeral that we had in the village, I read an article that mentioned some things that not, not a lot of people, maybe who didn't read the same article, about the donators of the different things for the funeral. The casket from Ferguson, I believe, Funeral Home, somebody donated a headstone for it. The township donated the burial plot out there. So, it was a real community effort and response, as you said, Mayor, to this event. But I just wanted to give those people recognition also for their part, the way they contributed and stepped up to the plate on that. So, Parks and Rec meeting next is the second Tuesday of July, I believe it's July eleventh. And we always have something fun and interesting and beneficial to the village on the agenda. I'm not sure what it's gonna have on it this time, but I'm looking forward to it, whatever it is. Music in the Park was conducted, if you want to believe this or not, on Sunday with the dreadful weather report we had. We was clocking that from early in the morning. We was clocking that from early in the morning and it was all red and yellow coming through Plain City. Six o'clock, it was fine. Seven o'clock, when we start the concerts, it was all red and yellow. And so again, a repeat of two weeks ago, should we cancel or not? And the performers wanted to tough it out. And we showed up and there was not a cloud in the sky at seven o'clock. I, I don't know what's going on with the weather stuff that we get these forward forecasts and then it turns out just to be beautiful weather. But we had a beautiful weather. We had a beautiful concert from the Double in One Symphony. It was kind of a prelude to our Fourth of July Independence Day celebrations that, that we're going to conduct, conduct next week. So anyway, just wanted to pass that along to you. We had a very successful music in the park and it was actually pretty well attended for us. So we don't, we do not have a music in the park on July second, which would be this Sunday. We do not have music in the park on July ninth because steam pressures take all of the park. That's the Liberty Bell March, the good place.
Timing, you, Mr. Reed.
There you go.
It's your cue to wrap up.
With my time, our next concert is July the sixteenth. It's going to be in Pleasant Valley Colony and Gardens because steam pressures are still taking out the park on that weekend. Thank you, Mayor, for the extension. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. And is there any update? I know Mrs. Granger's in the audience here. Is there an update on tree commission?
The tree commission is, oh, I feel bad now. I can't remember when they're coming up next. Tree commission's meeting shortly. I believe it's this week, actually.
Okay.
And they're going to be going over some of the strictures and guidelines and looking on a whole is what the group's main mission is. And the first meeting was really productive and I think we've got a great engaged group that's going to help guide the village with managing trees and margin towards a tree survey as well.
Thank you.
June twenty-seventh to sixteenth.
Thank you.
Personnel Finance, Jackie.
Our meeting is on Wednesday. We will be talking about the general fund reserve policy and I guess we'll also just have conversations about other policies and organizational assessments and things of that nature. And I think there's DRB meeting here, so we'll be over there.
Perfect. Thank you. Design, uh, fire board.
Next meeting is next Thursday, the sixth, at the fire station. Six thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Rutgers. Design Review Board.
We have a meeting this month. It's actually this Wednesday as well, same time as Personal Finance. We have two applications on the docket for, on our agenda that we have. Unfortunately, I will not be there, but I've already got an email drafted up that I'll be sending out to all the committee members anyway, what my view is on the two applications.
Thank you, Mr. Reed Daily. And Economic Development Committee.
We will meet tomorrow morning at eleven. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. We're moving into the public, first public hearing, PZ dash twenty-three dash one zero Lafayette Plain City Road parcels number zero-two dash zero-zero-three-five-seven dot zero-zero-three and number zero-two dash zero-zero-one-six-seven rezoning of one hundred twelve point eight-two acres along the west side of Lafayette Plain City Road, approximately quarter mile southwest, south of the intersection of Perry Pike and Lafayette Plain City Road and Darby Township, Agriculture District A one to Plan Residential District PRD, applicant Wilcox Communities. Is there anyone here to speak on this topic, this public hearing? I will now close the public hearing. Into our, moving into our next public hearing, PZ dash twenty-three dash three zero US forty-two, parcel number zero-four dash zero-zero-seven-seven-seven rezoning of eleven point six-six acres along the west side of US forty-two, north of Perry Pike, from Community Business District B two to Plan Commercial District PCD, applicant William Bizino. Is there anyone here to speak about this public hearing? I will close this public hearing at seven oh four. We have a couple discussion items on the agenda. The first one is campground length of stay. Lupton.
Yes, Parks Director Director Linda Granger is here tonight. Basically, we had a discussion a couple months ago about the campground length of stay. The Parks and Rec Committee was, took council's comments, fast to their next meeting and affirmed that they would like to implement the six-month length of stay to be, to start January first, twenty twenty-four, six months per calendar year. If the length of stay is updated, the campground rules will follow along shortly after that. Clarifying some items, implementing the length of stay and adding some notes about using the campground as your address and everything. Not sure if there's any questions. We just wanted to make sure we had a discussion before the first reading. And Ms. Granger's here. You have any questions as well?
I have, I have a question. So we talked about this on June twenty-seventh was, when we talked about this. And I, when I look back through the notes, I look at my own notes. I, January. I wrote January. Anyways, in August, no, in January, on January twenty-seventh, we had a conversation about this. It was brought up. And when looking at those minutes and looking at my own notes, I believe we pushed back on the six month and said, we need a lot more data to support that. And we even threw out things like, what, why not three months? Why not five months? Why not something other than six months? And we're now a long a months away from that. And this is the first we're hearing of it. And it's to bring forward exactly what we thought we weren't bringing forward at the last meeting. So I'm just curious as to where that data is that gets us to this.
Basically, the short answer is the software doesn't compile any of that. That would take a lot of guesswork from staff. We've moved to a new campsite software this year that hopefully helps us with a little bit, but it's pretty antiquated. And again, we took it back to the committee and they were very firm in their reasoning. And we are trying to take the committee's recommendation seriously. I don't know if you could talk a little bit more about the discussion?
Yeah, if I can speak to that. We have gone over this multiple times within the Parks and Rec Committee. And they tasked me with surveying other campgrounds in central Ohio and all of Ohio. And I even looked at other states, but I really tried to focus on Ohio and central Ohio, just to look at, number one, best practices. I mean, we are open year-round now, so that's, that's really something that I wanted to look at, other campgrounds who are open year-round because length of stay isn't always that people, if you're not open year-round, right? So what the Parks and Rec Committee did, I gave them the findings of what I kind of campground stood for, for best practices. And they understand the concern about residency. They, they agreed with council. Parks and Rec Committee does not want the campground used as a domicile or as a residential address. So they understand that concern. And basically through much discussion, they looked at a variety of factors. The revenue was one, safety of the campground itself and residents, aesthetics of it, all these things were sort of taken into consideration and talked about at length. And they understood council's viewpoint, but they basically felt that their initial recommendation of six-month length of stay as the limit, and not to correct anyone, but it's, it's within any twelve-month period, not necessarily your calendar year. So it's, it's six months stay maximum within a twelve-month period. One thing that this reservation system does allow us to do that the other one was, to Ms. Lupton's point, is it does allow us to lock out people. So because a lot of it is online, anybody can register. We can put a limit on what that length of stay is and it will not allow them to come back and camp within that twelve-month period. So that's, that's a huge improvement over what we had previously before. It would be us trying to manually weed out people if you will. So the new campground reservation system is really fantastic as far as that goes. And we can also ban people for other reasons if we have issues of disturbance. A lot of those things will be addressed now within the rules. Mr. Lafayette and I, Lafayette won over them. I think Chief McKee is reviewing them right now. So we have a lot of the residency issues addressed within the new campground rules. People, when they sign up or they, they agree to save the campground and pay the fee, they agree to those rules as well. So I think we've gotten much more drilled down with the rules and making people understand what they are. And I think that since they're now outlined so specifically in our campground rules, we're not going to have a lot of the, I think, issues that council was concerned about previously, whether it's school district enrollment, any behavior issues, anything like that. It is a much broader struggle and also there's a lot, of course, a much broader struggle and ability to basically enforce people leaving the campground and the new system assists us with banning people from the campground. So I think when the Parks and Rec Committee looked at that overall, that was a recommendation because obviously the usage, we are a popular campground, not necessarily that we're a go-for-a-hike-for-three-hours kind of campground, just our proximity to Columbus and Dublin and with Intel coming out. We have a variety of campers that utilize our campground. So I think when you look at this holistically, everything together with the new campground rule implementation, the new system, I think we have a much better handle on enforcing these things. So I hope that makes sense.
Mayor, the Parks Director, thankfully, last week sent out a kind of, in, in the form of a minutes record of the discussions and conclusions that were reached by the committee. It was very good and I'm a little surprised it wasn't in the packet, actually. This, this document wasn't in the packet and it's a, it's a complete discussion, a whole page of discussion of the length of stay issues that were addressed by the Parks and Rec Committee. And so if possibly, if you could get that distributed to council after the fact, then I think they would find it interesting reading of the approach and the work that was done. And this was like a, every committee meeting discussion. And we gradually, gradually accumulated more and more information, experiential, and how to handle the length of stay, what issues were going to be addressed by it. And it came down primarily to the residence issue, which limited it to six months. Otherwise, I couldn't personally really see a reason to limit it. But the residence issues was a very important one. So that was the deal killer for anything longer than six months. So I fully support the six-month and I think council should, should adopt that policy. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any other?
Tonight's just the first reading, so we will make sure everyone gets that in the last, and it will be in the next packet.
And it will be implemented when? If it is passed?
January first.
January, okay.
Will the rules that are coming out, like, address, like, you know, the issues with, with using Pastime Park as a permanent address immediately?
Well, right now, the rules we're working on, if council, depending on what council decides, we would take that length of stay limit and it would be implemented starting January twenty-first, starting January first of twenty twenty-four.
But the ones about residency, the next time you create a booking, you have to agree to those rules. So.
Right, that won't wait till twenty.
So that would, that would be January, so it doesn't solve like anything?
No, that would have to say for like Labor Day, I could have agreed to the new rules.
Well, we basically right now, just as it is a matter of information, you can't book into twenty twenty-four yet. The, the, basically, the booking system stops from your year, so we, people are not allowed to book into future years. So hence also the January first start date. So it's all inside of bookings.
Moving on to our next, next topic, community reinvestment area, CRA.
Yeah, please, again, let me make sure we have a discussion before tonight is the second reading of the CRA for two fifty-one West Main Street. Jason Stanford's here. Any discussion items, questions? Jason, I don't want to say anything before.
No, I'm primarily going to just answer any questions you guys might have from tonight or in general about the CRA program. I know there's been a lot of dialogue about the CRA, both the application that's up for consideration tonight, the app, or the, the program in general, and its impact on Plain City. So I've, I've still, I've kind of addressed some of those issues offline over time. So I just wanted to ask, you know, if you have any questions, please let me know. I'll be happy to address those tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stanford.
I have some comments, not really questions, just kind of comments. So I got back, I've been home for about four or five days. I did a bunch of research on this. You know, so I, I've reading both Mr. Stanford emails and, you know, researching online and looking at other things. I think that this EDIP is going to be so crucial to get policy through. So I want to talk about overall CRAs first and then specific CRAs. So I think that handling these ad hocly is getting us in trouble and getting that policy and procedure, which I know you have a draft on, is going to be so critical because it allows for clear messaging both to the developer if they go and buy a building and also it makes us a lot easier on why did you make this decision versus why did you make that decision? So I think that's, you know, really probably my number one thing. To me, I think that I, I've heard people say, you know, what is the incentive or why are we trying to incentivize? I, I tend to think there's still a need for CRAs in the uptown. I think about the Masonic Temple. I think about the Old Tower one sixty-one. I think about the elementary school. They're all going to keep asking and I think it's deserving. So I think that overall, I think keeping CRA in our toolbox and deploying it makes a lot of sense. Over time, where we TIF, where we CRA is going to change and putting people like the fire district and the library and the school board on both the TRIC, so the review council going forward, and also putting them in the communication of this plan, the EDIP, economic development incentive plan for everyone, you know, that's where I think those discussions should be happening. And then the actual decision-making should be on our standpoint. So that's kind of how I feel about overall the CRA. So I think they're needed. I think that we should continue doing it. We've seen a policy procedure. So then we talk about this specific one. So when this building was purchased, the, there was no policy in place. So the only assumption could be that the applicants assumed some level of abatement equal to some precedent. Now, while that's maybe not fair to us, I, because there, not every abatement sets a precedent, I think that's a reasonable approach. When it came to us at ten years or twelve years and a hundred percent, there was one precedent, I think Mr. Reed dissented, but the rest of us sent it to school board without much communication or conversation. So again, if we're trying to operate in good faith, we were way off. They are coming to us now at ten years, seventy-five percent, which will be the lowest CRA I think we've ever offered, which I think reflects the fact that because of the investments of different investors and everything, that it's a more attractive place and it's not needed as much and not as much of an abatement's needed maybe as day one. And I think we're getting that slowed down with this, down to a ten years, seventy-five percent. So I think that's pretty reasonable. This is all commercial, so it's not going to add any student enrollment, which is a nice benefit. And I think that we should be personally, I know Mr. Rutgers has said this to me and he's kind of won me over, that CRAs as a commercial device are much more easy on the other people now. The fire department still has to service that building and people still have to service that, first maybe a residential tip that has a much bigger impact. And then at the end of the day, when you actually look at Mr. Stanford's write-up and the dollars and cents between this and maybe a lower one, I think we looked at, the total impact for the village was at the high end, two thousand, two hundred dollars and to the school board at the high end was six thousand. To bring in more investment into the uptown district, it just seems like a no-brainer. And based on what we've looked at and proved, we're kind of gradually slowing it down. I think we should continue and the news is going to change, right? Someone's going to finally come and have a plan to develop Branco. We're going to have to help them get there. So there's going to be changes. And I just think that this CRA, which maybe is one of the smaller impact that is right before we put a policy, is an odd place to kind of push back on. So I personally am supportive of it. And I think that it's operating in good faith. And then I really do, though, overall, let's get a policy in place. Let's make this clear to both incoming developers. And then I really do, though, overall, let's get a policy in place, let's make this clear to both incoming developers and to us to make this a lot easier. That's kind of my broad soapbox, so I'll turn, I'll be done there.
The one thing I didn't like, though, that's without, again, maybe we should have discussion when the actual application, we talked about that in the second reading, is, don't take this the wrong way, Mr. Reed, you said you expected the money to come to you, and that's not what a CRA is for. Just because you you buy a building, you don't expect it. You have to do the application, you have to you have to see where the economic development is going to be coming and how it's going to be helpful. And the original one had totally different numbers than when they took it out and they put the second one in and massaged the numbers a little bit. And so I'm just a little worried about, all right, how is that going to work? And then also the school board gave a recommendation, and yet we didn't use that recommendation, we went for our own. And so I'm just curious why we didn't go with what the school board came.
So so my counters to those are, one, the TRRC review council is in place to hold the applicants responsible to the level of abatement that they are getting. It is not something we've had in place historically that we are putting in place. If the applicants do not meet those thresholds, we as a village have the right and the responsibility to pull back on that abatement. So to your point, I hear you, and I don't know how any forecast can be proven out until you actually see it. But that's why we have a review council, and if they hit that target, you know, then we're all good. But if we limit it now, they might never be able to hit those targets. So I think that the ownership of, and the responsibility of that is why we're putting in the TRIC or the housing council. You can correct me on which one it is.
Technically, both the housing council first votes in CRAs, and then the TIRC will be every incentive.
Perfect. So we have that, and on that board, we have the school board. I think by law, actually, I won't even misspeak, by by law, who has to be, like, on the housing council and TIRC?
School representatives would need to be on both councils. So I believe on one, I care much as TIRC or the housing council, but we do have Dr. Miller on one, and then I believe their new district treasurer on the other.
And what about people, like, I might recommend the library be on there, or townships on their county representatives?
Absolutely, they will be, we haven't gotten to the point formally appointing them yet. But yeah, we have, what I think would be a good community representation on both of those boards. Again, part of that is flushed out by the ORC, but the rest of it is by our design, what we feel would be appropriate for those boards and to make sure they're represented.
And and on the school board comment, two things. One, and I've met, I've talked with, I've read the emails, I've talked with them. I I would wonder how they came up with their numbers, because it wasn't like we had facts that were provided and numbers. Jason and Mr. Stanford provide a lot of numbers about what the overall economic impact would be. I haven't seen any other numbers, number one. And number two, this is our decision, and we're, this is our board. You know, and while I want to make a bigger 10, and I would say I want impact, I want I want insight from these groups. At the end of the day, we were elected to make this decision on these items. And when something goes to the TIF that they have in Jerome Township, they didn't come to us and ask how that would impact our school district that we're a part of. So I I hear you, and I want to partner with them, and I will tell them this, I will have to tell them this. I do want to partner with them on decisions, and I really want to partner with them upfront on these councils and these policies. But this decision that I am making is not based on input from anyone else, and it's based on what I believe is the level of abatement that is, not, the level that's, that this justifies. You know, I would say, and this level of abatement, to me, is a gradual step down in the uptown towards a fully developed, vibrant uptown. Those would be my kind of responses to that.
Thank you, Mr. Terry, for taking that side of of the argument or the discussion here. Mr. Sanford, the the school board came back with a counter offer of 50% abatement, did they not? So they weren't willing to settle, and they did, they did, they had, as I understand it, I was told that they had a fairly heated discussion or or active discussion about whether to approve it, because they've always approved it. They've been kind of a rubber stamp for the village, CRAs. But they were, they were kind of in the mood to dig in their heels on this one because they they couldn't see some key elements of being applicable. And and what I, what I see as the key elements of being applicable is that you could make a really strong case that this is a violation of state law, the Ohio revised code, to grant a CRA in the uptown. The requirement is for a CRA that it has to be in an area where development is discouraged. And that's verbatim, the wording that's used in the in the revised code. Everyone I've asked, without exception, not one other person, not one person has said anything other than development is not discouraged in the uptown area, and it's obvious that it is not. The developers are fighting over those properties, are trying to be the first to get to a property that's coming up for sale. In this particular case, for this application here for that property, the the previous owners did not want to sell that property, had no intention of selling it. I have this from them, okay, they're testimony to me. But the 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 prospective buyers came back with such an offer, a good offer, that they could not say no to it. Now, that's all fine, that's real estate, that's the way it works. But the point is that development in the uptown area is not discouraged, and that's the Ohio revised code requirement. So for that reason, only nothing to do with personalities or issue, past issues or anything else, because I believe it would not, it would be a violation of state law to do that, to put that, grant that CRA in that area, which is not, where development is not, is not discouraged, which is the requirement. I I have to uphold my oath that I took when I joined council to uphold the state law, and I will be voting against the CRA. So thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
You may have to speak up.
Mayor, 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 this is, this is not protocol in a meeting. First of all, while the administrator is allowed to speak in a meeting by ordinance, that's not a delegatable right.
We asked him to come to the meeting to help me here.
Well, that's, that's all well and good, but he does not have a right to speak at the meeting.
He's our staff member.
Pardon me?
He's our staff member, and we were just having a conversation with him.
But that's the rules.
Do you know what the right information is?
By charter, the mayor has a right to speak at the meetings. The, I believe the fiscal officer has a right to speak at the meetings. Those are the only people besides council members who have a built-in right to speak now.
We were just in a conversation with him, so we're trying to get all our information.
You can grant, council can grant him the right to speak.
Okay, I'm asking him to speak, Frank.
Well, no, no, I said, I didn't say Mr. Rucker could ask him to speak, I said council could. Mr. Rucker, you're not council, by the way.
Well, I believe that.
I object to him speaking.
Okay, your lectures noted.
If you want to vote to grant him the right to speak, fine.
Voting to allow Mr. Stanford to speak right after our Parks and Rec Director spoke.
No, but.
Please call the roll.
Fine, I'm objecting here.
Mr. Dryer.
Mr. Terry for the first.
No.
No, we made a motion, Mr. Rucker seconded.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Yehl?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Stanford, you can, you can speak now.
It's like clown world, man.
I think I need to end it now, actually. First of all, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to respond to the question. As somebody who is your economic development manager for the village, I work daily, almost daily, with businesses that are in Plain City. In this statement, understand that there's concern about if there is discouragement of business activity in Plain City. I encourage you all to talk to your local businesses and ask them what it's like to locate in Plain City at this point in time, and see if they feel that this is a wise investment in Plain City. Now, we've said before, the incentives do not heal everything, they do not address every concern that businesses have, but they help offset the challenges that these businesses face. When you're looking at 200-year-old buildings, you have to have HVAC, you have to have electricity, you have to have roofing, you have to have all the structure redone in place, up to code, before you can even seek a business to go into these spaces, okay? Now, when we look at the construction averages, since the pandemic, construction costs on average in the state of Ohio has gone up 48% in the last two and a half years, okay? Prices are not going down. So when we go out there and we ask businesses to respond to their CRA application for more information about the construction costs, the architecture, things like that, this is the information they're coming back to us. I have no doubt in my mind that it will cost more than a million and a half to redo a theater in uptown Plain City. I mean, this is the reality we're facing. Now, I understand over time that priorities do shift for communities. We have two other CRAs here in Plain City, we have one along 42 North and 42 South. There are significant other challenges for those communities or for those neighborhoods. First and foremost, there's lack of utilities. We can't have business activity where there's no water and sewer. That's primarily the issue on 42 North, similar on 42 South. So until we see incentives to make that possible, or our water sewer district come online and make that possible, we will struggle to have business activity, new activity in those areas. Uptown is always a little bit different, and I challenge anybody to talk to your colleagues in other communities where you see very successful, thriving downtown communities, and ask them what they do to build those communities. We are now getting to a point where it is getting better, it's getting much better in in uptown Plain City, but we're not there yet. And I would say, go out, talk to your constituents, say, are we done growing uptown Plain City? And I I would assume that most people you talk to would say, keep going, we're on the right path. We, as a village, are investing, and we have to continue to show our support for these businesses. So that's, I want to get off my soapbox, but if there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer those questions.
Mr. Sanford, do you believe the development is discouraged in the uptown area?
Yes.
How how so? Because you're the first person I've run into that I've gotten that answer from.
Honestly, Frank, at this degree, I think right now what we're going through this discussion is discouraging businesses in Plain City.
The the what is?
The discussion that we're having tonight.
Is discouraging, because if they don't get their CRAs, they're not going to invest in in?
Because the image that we're projecting to the business community that we're potentially making.
So it's nothing to do with the actual architecture and infrastructure in the uptown area. It's council's discussions that's making it discouraging. So what in the uptown area is, in the architecture and the buildings and the and the way it looks, is discouraging people from from investing in it? I mean, I I think the the history argues against that, the record.
I'm not seeing the architecture design, I'm seeing the cost of getting our businesses, our buildings up to code enough to where they can have new businesses move into them.
Yet that doesn't seem to put them off at all. They, you can't find a vacant building for sale in the uptown area.
Mr. Reed, the amount of money that it takes to get one of those vacant buildings or historic buildings?
That is immaterial, that's market pressure.
But then they're passing it on to their, the people that are coming in to, like, to operate a business, and then we just lost a business in the uptown because of the rent, the cost of the rent and everything. So yes, it can be said that maybe we are not pro-business because we're not supported enough.
But still, we have no, no, we have no vacancies here.
We have vacancies.
Even with the.
So so the whole 161 is full and vibrant and not vacant?
Is there buildings for sale in the uptown area?
Yes, 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 there's dilapidated buildings in the uptowns that are sitting there, so.
Facebook for sale.
Yes. And again, businesses are, businesses are leaving because there's not enough in the uptown to attract more people and foot traffic into their shops. So Anger and Arrow is a prime example.
Okay, I'm I'm not sure that that's because.
They're confusing with facts.
That's right. We're going to move on because we've already talked about the community reinvestment area, and we have, Mr. Stanford has given, thank you, Mr. Stanford, for coming to council and helping to address our concerns. Moving into old business, second reading ordinance 8-2023, accepting the annexation petition of 122.468 acres from Darby Township, Madison County, Ohio, to the Village of Plain City.
Motion to approve ordinance 08-2023?
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Yehl?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Second reading ordinance 9-2023, rezoning 0.92 acres at 354 North Chillicothe Street and 360 North Chillicothe Street, parcels number 18-0001164, number 18-0001165, number 18-0001166, from Neighborhood Business District B1 to Community Business District B2.
Motion to approve 09-2023?
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Yehl?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Second reading ordinance 10-2023, authorizing the village administrator to award the Village of Plain City community repaving project to Capstone and Associates.
Motion to approve the second reading ordinance 10-2023?
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Yehl?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Second reading resolution 20-2023, authorizing the execution of a CRA for 251 West Main Street.
Motion to approve resolution 2023, 2023?
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Yehl?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
No.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Second reading resolution 21-2023, a resolution replacing resolution 8-2021, and authorizing the village administrator to apply for, accept and enter into a water pollution control loan fund, WPCLF, agreement on behalf of the Village of Plain City for construction of a wastewater facility and designing a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
Motion to approve 21-2023?
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Yehl?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Moving into new business, motion to approving the community grant application request from the Steam Threshers Organization.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor, I think this motion did sort of some discussion on the merits of it. My preference would be that this go to the Parks and Rec Committee as a referral and to get a report back from them on the applicability of, and the appropriateness of of giving, granting them a a grant of money.
Mr. Reed?
First thing.
Did Rock the Clock go to Parks and Rec?
Pardon me?
Did Rock the Clock go to?
I'm not sure why you're asking that question.
Because it's the same type of, it comes to council.
Any motion can go to a committee, any any motion, doesn't matter if it's the same or different.
Okay, so make the motion that we move it to the committee, Frank.
Well, I have.
No, please, please stop talking about it and just make the motion, and let's let council make that, take action on that.
Let me explain to you why I think that, and maybe you'll change your opinion on it. I doubt it, but maybe you will. The the grant is for $5,000. The listed items in the application accompanying letter documentation list things that were negotiated as part of a contract with the Steam Threshers Organization that they would pay in exchange for getting all of our campground fees monies during that period of time. And that amounted to approximately, as I recall, more or less $10,000 in campground fee revenue that were given them to the Steam Threshers. In exchange for those benefits, they agreed to pay for those expenses in the contract. So this grant of this money amounts to a modification of the contract that they're asking us to essentially waive having to pay expenses to the to the village for the security service, $40 an hour, $5,000, they list it here, chief, as an expense that they have to pay. So that's where that comes from. And there's other items, electricity, the other stuff, it comes to around $11,000 of expenses they agreed to pay in exchange for the campground revenue. So I think, although I'm not against. So I think, although I'm not against giving them the grant, I think it should go to Parks and Rec because they were principal people involved in negotiating that contract, the requirements that the Parks Department expected from them. There is a performance issue with the contract, and this would be a perfect point to have those discussions around that there's opinion from some people that they're not following up on agreed-to elements of the contract. And it's very difficult to get a hold of, to get these things corrected. And you can try as you might to get people to follow through and fix everything that they're supposed to fix, and they do some of it, they don't do all of it, and we really need to have all of it done. So, having said that, we need to have those.
May I ask you a question? From a mechanical standpoint, when is the next Parks and Rec Committee meeting?
Tuesday.
This Tuesday?
Second Tuesday of July.
And?
No, in July.
I would suggest.
Second Tuesday of July?
Yes.
Not next Tuesday?
I would suggest that we're thinking that there's a timing issue here. There isn't. Because they're going to have to pay those requirements, whether we give them money or those expenses, whether we give them the money to or not. If we don't get this done till September, and it's going to get done in July, that would be my commitment to you. It doesn't make any difference. They'll just get reimbursed for it then. So it's not, I don't see a difference. There's a timing issue.
Thank you.
With this grant. So there's other things that Parks and Rec can use this as a, as a perfect excuse to bring these issues, other issues up. And I plan to introduce, and I've discussed it with a couple of the Parks Committee members, that Plain City really needs an iconic event that we can promote, much like the Pumpkin Festival in Circleville and.
Well, that is Steam Thresher's. They've been here for many years.
I get that, and that was my recommendation, okay? We have a perfect item to do, to be that iconic event, and I would support that. But there's issues to work out, because it's, there's a whole bunch of issues and discussion that needs to be had on that. And I think this would be a perfect opportunity to start having those discussions with them.
So, Mr. Reed, we have a motion, a second, I think we should take a vote on. But I will say this. Regardless of the outcome of this, there is no reason the Parks and Rec Committee can't have those discussions and start building a plan and bringing it to us.
He accepts that.
What I really don't like is once something is on the agenda, and we are talking about it, and we have, they have made the application, that this is when it comes up. That, to me, is not operating good faith.
So, wait a minute, Mr. Terry. I don't know that I knew this was on the agenda until I got the packet home Friday.
But you said there's been, you said there's been performance issues for years. So there's been, you said there's been performance issues and issue with the contract for years. So if that is how you believe, and as long as the Parks and Rec Committee, you've had years to discuss it, bring it up.
And we have discussed it, and it continues not to be up to what my expectations is. I'm just going to speak for myself. This, with this application, we have leverage. You know what leverage is. And so we can, we can have another chance to negotiate. If we do this, will you, will you do this? And we'll just wait for you to get it done, and then you can have stuff like that, okay?
To echo Mr. Terry's comment, Mr. Reed, I would say, you know what? I challenge you to bring a large event to the park, a large event to the park.
Hey, that's what we're going to start working on if the Parks Committee will agree with me. I haven't mentioned it to them the first time.
It takes a lot of people, a lot of volunteers to make things happen.
And I would love to see those discussions.
So the question I got, though, is the grant application is there for community events just like this? We made this and established this so opportunities and groups that want to come and need a little help can get that help. That's what they're asking for. They're not, regardless of what they're paying for or where they're at. They bring a lot to the community, the Steam Thresher should bring a lot to the community, and they've asked for this, they filled it out, the grant, just like anybody else has. Has nothing to do with their contract that they have. They're asking for this grant. I don't think it has anything to do with what their contract is. It could be, for their contract, whatever it is, this is a grant application to help them, assist them in putting on this wonderful event that's here. And if I think there's pushback, it goes right back to what we were just talking about, the CRAs, and having difficulty with people coming here. If we are going to push back on something like this, what other community events would want to come here and be in our parks? Which our parks are greatly needed to be.
And if they're in breach of contract, that's a completely different conversation we need to have.
I don't, I'm not saying breach of contract, I'm just saying we need to have some discussions about some things that are not being done. And this provides some leverage and opportunity to do that, and I think we should refer it to the Parks Committee so that we can have those discussions. There's not a timing issue here. They're not going to go out of business. If we pass this by, the opportunity to engage in discussions, serious discussions about issues in the future. And I'm more about the future than I am about the contract stuff. I want to start having these discussions. And this is a perfect element to do it, but I'm seriously concerned about the contract issues too.
That has nothing to do with the grant.
Right, so.
It does have something to do with the grant.
Talk to the Parks and Rec and then do your report, instead of just talking about music in the park.
The grant is about paying contract expenses that they agreed to pay.
Right now, we have a motion and a second.
One thing to say, only because I've heard it like four times now. If there is a problem with the performance under a contract that we have entered into someone, I would expect that somebody would bring it to my attention.
Yeah. Because I would like to know that in advance, in order to be able to handle it on its face and on its merits. I don't want to have intermingling of, we're going to harry, hold a carrot over here and extort you into doing something that maybe you have to do, you don't have to. Either they're performing, they're not performing, and we'll deal with that separately. Without due respect, Mr. Rucker, a lot of these handle, or issues are handled in the business office, and they're purposely kept away from the attorneys until it's necessary to engage them, simply because it gets way more complicated when it's very easy to work through. And in addition, we have other issues to talk about and other topics.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table.
Mayor, I wish you wouldn't do that, cut me off.
Well, Mr. Reed, you cut me off too, so.
I did not, we're going to use the floor, thank you. And so until I do, I have it.
Can we get that to you?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Dryer?
I have Mr. Terry for the first, Ms. Ferguson for the second.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, this is really, I don't know what you're doing. You do not have the right to cut somebody out.
I have the right to keep the meeting going as the chair.
And it's going as long as I'm talking.
But you are saying the same thing over and over again, and so we have to keep it going.
Until I reduce the floor, Mayor, I get to talk. That's the rule.
Okay.
If you want to ignore the rules.
What else do you have to say, Mr. Reed?
I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
What?
What do you vote on?
How do you vote, Mr. Reed?
We're voting on a motion, one we've been talking about for the last 20 minutes.
No.
Mr. Rucker?
Absolutely.
Motion passes by the one. Moving into new business, first reading ordinance 11-2023, rezoning of 111, or excuse me, 112.82 acres at Zero Lafayette Plain City Road, parcels number 02-00357.003 and numbers 02-00167 from Darby Township Agricultural District A1 to Planned Residential District PRD. First reading ordinance 12-2023, rezoning of 11.66 acres at Zero US-42, parcel number 04-00777 from Community Business District B2 to Planned Commercial District PCD. First reading ordinance 13-2023, authorizing the sale of municipally-owned personal property not needed for public use. First reading ordinance 14-2023, authorizing the village administrator to award the Village of Plain City wastewater treatment plant expansion project to Kirk Brothers Company Incorporated. First reading resolution 22-2023, authorizing a pre-annexation agreement with PC161 Holdings LLC. First reading resolution 23-2023, amending the length of stay policy for the Pastime Park campground. That concludes our public portion of our meeting. We will be, we are about to enter into executive session. Executive session will be pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G8, to consider confidential information related to negotiations with other political subdivisions. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I will motion to go into executive session?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Sorry, I'll speak louder.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
We will not be coming back with any further business. So thank you for.